I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you could remain standing for a quick moment, I'd like to recognize, have a moment of silence in honor of our longtime 20-years-principal of Tiverton High School, Robert Ponyatowski. He was actually the principal when I graduated from here, who passed away last week at the age of 90, so if we could just recognize him with a moment of silence. Thank you. Ms. Mendez tells me we have no one for open forum this evening, so we will move right into our special recognition. Dr. Sanquioni, if you don't mind kicking things off?
Not at all. My pleasure, Madam Chair, and you're aware, because we've had a ceremony on this, but, you know, when you put together perseverance, dedication, and hard work, you get results. And sometimes those results actually get recognized. And in our profession, a lot of times, we do this work because we care about kids, we care about doing the right thing for our staff and students, and it goes unnoticed. So every once in a while, when it is noticed, it's worth making a big deal about. And in this case, our high school principal, Principal Susan Craven, has been named Rhode Island Secondary Principal of the Year, and richly deserved, and you all know that. She's done an amazing job here at the high school, previous to that at the middle school. She's a pleasure to work with, consummate professional, and I couldn't say enough good things about Sue. So Sue, come on up.
Thank you very much. I'm not sure this is on, can you? Just in case, because Peter was a little soft.
Hand her, just grab that one. Sue, just grab that one.
That's okay. I'm good. Hello? Yeah. Now it's working. Thank you. No, I don't want to, definitely don't want to, but I appreciate the recognition, I really do. This job is hard, right? We all know that. It has its ups and downs, and trials and tribulations, but at the end of the day, if we do what's in the best interest of kids, we're doing the right thing. And I feel that Tiverton has done a great job at recognizing what students need and moving students in the right direction, and given the district the recognition it deserves for the hard work and dedication of all of you, the administrative team, the teachers, and the students themselves. So, thank you.
Congratulations. Just, Mrs. Craven, I just want to echo some of Dr. Sanquioni's comments. We are so fortunate to have you here, and so fortunate, and really happy to see you recognized as the Rhode Island Secondary Principal of the Year this year. Some positive attention being brought to Tiverton, which is so desperately needed and deserved, so thank you. Anyone else?
So, I just wanted quickly, because people that are, not everyone that was here was at the separate ceremony that we had, and how nice it was to see your family, you know, really enjoyed meeting them and seeing them there, how nice it was to see some of your peers there, some of the other people who put together this award and presented it, your students, seeing your students there, and so many of them speaking to us, and, you know, one of them in tears, who was just so excited. So, for those of us that, you know, those of you that were not there, it was quite moving. It was a rather large group, and we're all very proud and very thankful that you're here with us. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Just want to thank you for everything you did at the middle school, at the high school, the NIASC report, CTE programs, the school improvement team, I mean, the list goes on, so thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Well, Mrs. Craven, again, congratulations. We're lucky to have you.
I appreciate that.
Okay. So, we're going to slide right into our student spotlight. We have three students who are being honored, and Mrs. Craven, I'll let you kick things off.
Sure. And I know one student is here, Nora Winslow, and let me tell you a little bit about Nora's recognition. So, she's being awarded with the Distinction of Carson Scholar for the 2025 school year. Students who are named for this award receive a $1,000 scholarship for college. It designates the recipients as individuals who are dedicated to serving their communities. Nora has distinguished herself. She must attend an accredited K-12 school in the United States, and each nominee epitomizes academic excellence, and they must have a minimum GPA of 3.75, which obviously Nora does. So, I'd like to congratulate Nora and bring her up to receive this award. So Nicholas Gilkerson, who unfortunately cannot be here this evening, received the award, and the award designates recipients as individuals who created and promote amateur hockey in the United States by recognizing those who embody the legacy of Hobie Baker. And Hobie Baker, the quote is, "We honor outstanding hockey players, legends of hockey, and high school hockey players who demonstrate exceptional hockey skills, leadership, character, sportsmanship, and scholastic achievement." So, I'd like to congratulate Nicholas for this award, but unfortunately, he's at an athletic event, so he could not be here this evening.
Congratulations, Finn.
Just quickly, because hockey is near and dear to my heart, and I was so proud of Tiverton when we started this joint program and that we continue it, and just so thrilled to see someone like him representing this district in such a fine manner. So, congratulations to him.
Absolutely. And last but not least, we have two students, Cassidy Rich and Faith Ellis. These two CNA students earned first place in the Rhode Island statewide HOJA competition. HOJA is a global student-led organization, recognized by the U.S. Department of Education and the Department of Health and Human Services in several federal state agencies. The mission is to empower future health professionals to become leaders in the global health community through education, collaboration, and experience. They actively promote career opportunities in the health industry to enhance the delivery of quality health care to all people. These two students will go on to compete in a national competition scheduled in the end of May, so I'd like to congratulate both girls, but they also had to work this evening, so they could not be here.
Congratulations to them.
Thank you.
And welcome to our student representative this evening. Thank you, Mrs. Craven. So, we will now move on to general business. First up is our superintendent search update and survey results, Dr. Mercurio.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Members of the committee, Dr. Sanquioni, thank you for having me here this evening. So, as I mentioned to you about a month ago, that I would be touching base with you throughout the course of the entire process, the first part of that process was conducting six different focus sessions, and we conducted those, we did four in-person, right here in this room, we did four sessions, and then the next evening, we did two virtual sessions. As I mentioned to you, that those focus sessions and the community survey that was online, we encourage individuals in the community to participate in, that serves as data sources from which we build the candidate profile, which is before you this evening. You have copies in your packet in preparation for this evening. As I mentioned to you, the focus groups and the surveys provide that data, I go through that data, and from that, I mine several themes. You see those themes that are listed there. The questions, just to remind not only the committee, but also the public, members of the community, basically, you know, what are the skills and competencies that you want to see in the next leader of the Tiverton Public Schools, and what are the tasks and challenges ahead for that individual once he or she assumes the role? So, before you this evening, you have the draft of that profile. We would be looking for action from the committee this evening so that that profile can be made public, and we can attach that to the work that we give to the screening committee so that they can see what the expectations are for the individual, the individuals that they're going to be screening in that process, which is coming up in a couple of weeks. As I mentioned to you in the beginning of the process, NESDEC has a variety of different communication channels and listserv networks that it uses to push out the posting. You probably have seen that, the posting has been pushed out throughout all of those channels. My name is on the posting as well. One of the things that NESDEC likes to do is not put my name specifically on it, but I like to have somebody who is, has experience in the state, to be able to put a name with a face as it relates to the search here. I will share with you that as of last Thursday, Friday morning, there were about 20 applicants, and the posting will close on May 2nd. It closes on the 2nd of May, which is obviously a week from this coming Friday. There are 20 applicants. I have also had the opportunity to speak with at least four other individuals who have not uploaded credentials yet, who were interested in the position. They had indicated that they were also going to submit their credentials through the portal. If you remember, I do not collect those, those are collected by NESDEC, I don't see those. I reach out to my liaison in the NESDEC office to see how many folks have applied, and I will continue to do that, and I will continue to work with Madam Chair and Ms. Krager, who are obviously your liaison for the board, and Ms. Krager, the liaison for the district. So, things are moving along, things are going well. You know, I think we're in a good space. You know, there are, as we mentioned before, there are also other communities that are looking for leaders, but the fact that we are working back from that mid-June deadline, based on the timeframe for the entire project, I think we're in a good spot. Obviously, the next heavy lift is the work of the screening committee. I will be working, as I mentioned to you before, I will be doing two different workshops with the screening committee to prepare them for the interviews, which will take place the week after the second workshop with them. There's a workshop scheduled with them on the 7th and one on the 14th. Those two workshops are set up, obviously, to talk about the entire process, and to talk about what the responsibilities of the screening committee are as it relates to selecting candidates that they would eventually interview. As I mentioned previously, it's important to make sure that the individuals who have been selected and have been volunteered to participate in the screening committee, that they are available for multiple evenings of interviews. It's imperative that those individuals are part of all of the aspects of that process. So, at this point, that's where we are. Again, the only thing that would require action from the board for me this evening is related to the approval of the candidate profile. You will see that it is marked as a draft, and it is a draft until you actually put a final gavel down on it. I'm certainly happy to answer any questions, respond to any comments or concerns that you may have.
Dr. Mercurio, were you planning to kind of walk us through it at a high level?
Sure.
What the profile entails and some of the...
Sure. So, as I mentioned before, the profile is pulled from, it's pulled from the data sources of the forms and the community survey. So, when you look there, there were five larger overarching themes that emerged: fiscally responsible leadership, collaborative community leadership, consensus-building leadership, student-centered leadership, and collaborative instructional leadership. All of those things are part of that, part of the profile, and you see, under each of those, it lists a series of expectations for the candidate. If you move past those overarching pieces, you will see that the challenges are listed there and the tasks. Now, of course, they are broad, they are not necessarily specific, they are not a to-do list, a daily to-do list, they are broader, as it relates to the individual that's going to be running the larger macroscopic organization of the Tiverton Public Schools. That's why those are listed there. They're general enough to encompass lots of different things under that umbrella, but they're specific as it relates to what the community put forth as a set of expectations they would like to see in that leader.
I would like to entertain a motion to approve the superintendent's search candidate profile as proposed by Dr. Mercurio.
I will make that motion.
Is there a second? Second? Is there discussion? Anyone have questions?
We just got this tonight. Do we have a chance to look it over?
I sent it out on Friday.
Oh, you did?
Via email.
Oh, okay.
So, Dr. Mercurio, I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Just to clarify, so it's all five, all five of these pages, right? So, it's the whole...
Yes.
So, they'll get, you know, exactly what you, you know, you have, just so people who can't see it, you know, we look at the fiscal, you know, the high-level, fiscally responsible, collaborative, community, consensus-building, but then there's quite a few things underneath that came from those surveys.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Those are, so you have the larger overarching theme, and then you have the indicators, so the successful individual, an effective individual in that role will do those things well.
Perfect. Thank you.
My take on this is that this is something a candidate would use to try to tailor their pitch.
They would. The idea is that once you make, that once you put a gavel down on this, you would want to, you would want to post this, you would want to post this. I would be sharing it with the individuals that reached out to me. I didn't, obviously, did not share any draft. I did say that it would be before you as part of the process, and once you put a gavel down on it and approved it, then I would be able to take draft off that and then to send it to those individuals. Yes, you are correct, Madam Chair.
And I would also expect that these would be shared with members of the screening committee?
That is part of the process, yes.
As part of their preparation?
Correct. That sets the context for the process, so the screening committee knows what those expectations are. The idea, and I will send those materials, the information that the screening committee gets, all of the members of the school committee will get as well, so that you can see exactly what that process looks like that I will be facilitating. Remember, I'm facilitating those workshops, I am not part of the actual interviews. One of the things that NESDEC is reticent to do is to participate by physically sitting there, because candidates may draw their attention to us, thinking that we make that decision, but at the end of the day, the decision is yours as a board.
Understood. Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions or comments? Well, okay, then I will call for a vote. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. So, next on the agenda, don't go too far. We have a discussion to approve the proposed salary range for our new superintendent. So, at your seat this evening, also in the packet I sent out to you last week, there is a sheet that highlights the current salary rates of superintendents throughout Rhode Island. Those who are in the yellow highlight are the ones that are either geographically important to us, meaning neighbors of ours, and/or statistically important. In other words, they're typical, they're used quite often to compare their district to ours where it comes to standardized testing, et cetera. So, what we see here, and, you know, having been on this committee for a while, I can tell you that some of these folks have been in their seats for several years now, some a little bit newer. I will also say that, you know, for example, Middletown just hired their new superintendent within the past year. The Portsmouth School District has had their superintendent for about five or six years Smithfield, I honestly don't know, in arrogance. I will also say that Barrington Superintendent, I believe, has only been on board for a year or two.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think they were just...
Yeah. And Bristol Warren, Ms. Riley, she's been there for about maybe four or five years now, and she also came to the Bristol Warren District with many years of superintendent experience. So, with all of that said, what we need to do is, for the purposes of NESDEC communicating to people who are applying here, being able to come up with a range, what I would expect would be, you know, a low-end range for someone who has little to no superintendent experience, to, you know, a high range for someone that has already been a superintendent in another district and wants to take us on. So, I'm going to propose, out of the gate, and we can have a discussion, yea or nay, but, you know, to get us started, I would like to propose that our salary range be advertised as anywhere between $165,000 to $180,000. Do I have a motion to have that as our salary range for discussion?
I'll make a motion for discussion.
Do I have a second? Seconds. Okay. I've done all the talking so far, I'll let somebody else chime in.
So, I'm just looking at, like, schools that have similar, or close to similar, school sizes.
Mm-hmm.
Or enrollment, I'm sorry. So, that 165 seems like a good low range. I don't really see anyone, maybe Newport at 180, 1590, that has an enrollment of 1800, which is surprising. I thought they were a lot bigger, but... So, based upon the people that I circled that were sort of similar to us in enrollment, that looks like a good range. Barrington, holy cow, but anyway. But, you know, based upon, like I said, I just went through, and I just circled people that had, you know, were close to us in enrollment, and that seems like a good range based upon that, Madam Chair.
Does anyone else have any input?
Just a question, actually, for Dr. Mercurio. In this process, is it standard, or do you see that applicants, when they're submitting their application, do they also indicate what they're looking for, for a salary? That's something I experience in my work, but I don't know if that happens elsewhere.
The short answer is yes and no. Some do, some don't.
Okay.
Of the individuals with whom I've spoken, two of them have been inquired, and I have simply said that, you know, we don't, NESDEC does not make recommendations as it relates to that, that's why I'm not making a recommendation before you, that's up for you to deliberate about that. The only thing that I have said to candidates is that you are, you are, as a board, you are deliberating upon that and making a decision about that. Once you make that decision, and that's public, then I can share that with them, obviously.
Okay. Have they shared with you, though, I'm looking for $175,000?
They've asked what the range is.
That's it? Okay. Thank you.
Will they self-call? So, if we say 165 to 180, and that's not okay, they'll just pull? Have you seen that?
Have I seen that? Yes, not necessarily in a NESDEC search, but yes, I have seen that.
Okay.
Yes.
I'm looking at our enrollment number. It says 1,520, and we have 1,696.
That's the in-school enrollment, in premises?
So, the, oh, all right, so the 1696 is the out-of-district placement, that's including everybody?
Yes.
Okay, so 1520 is in school.
Yep. These numbers were, I took these numbers straight off of RIDE's website for October enrollment of this past year without any kind of filtering. And it was really just to kind of help us understand relative district sizes.
So, North Smithfield has 1,637 students, so that's pretty comparable to us, so...
Who's, oh, North Smithfield, yeah.
North Smithfield, yeah, I'm looking at that.
Mm-hmm.
And they're at 162,000?
Yep.
So, maybe that would be a good low-ball number?
But then you have Exeter-West Greenwich that's at 1544 at 171,6.
It's kind of all over the place. I think we have to consider not only our district size, but the candidate's experience and what they're, you know, what we feel that we should pay for a candidate with X experience, understanding that, yes, we are a small school district, we're not going to pay what I would expect Providence to pay. We can't, right? We have to monitor our budgets, but I also want to ensure that our salary range attracts good professionals.
So, for Madam Chair, members of the committee, old habits die hard, so as a former superintendent, as you're looking at numbers, it's, I just want to impress upon you the fact that as you are deliberating on this, individuals who are candidates that are looking at the district, obviously, they're looking at the entire community, those individuals who are in central office would look to see what the org chart looks like as well. What is the configuration? What are the roles and responsibilities therein? And what does that look like? And obviously, you mentioned that the smaller districts, obviously, they wear multiple hats, but even as you look at data from our own state, it can vary widely as it relates to what that organizational chart looks like from a staffing perspective. I just offer that to you as context, that's all.
No, you're right on that, and that's something that's become very, you know, obvious to all of us over the last couple of years, as we've addressed various staffing issues. So, yeah, no, that's right. I think, you know, just for everyone to keep in mind as well, right, this, what we're talking about right now is one component of a future intendant's contract, right? There will be other items that we will negotiate with a candidate directly, and that we will also, you know, as we put out this range, that doesn't mean that it obligates us in any way, shape, or form to fall within that range, that we have the flexibility to pay what we, as a body, feel is the right amount to pay and to negotiate with a candidate. So, just, you know, bear that in mind. This is for the purpose of advertising and for attracting candidates.
But I would think, if I'm a candidate and you say the range is 165 to 180, I would fully expect that it's going to fall within that range. I wouldn't expect to come in and now try to negotiate something lower, so I do think this is something we are going to have to honor. I mean, to your point, you could, well, what if we traded more time off, or, you know, certainly, but I know as a candidate coming in, I would expect that this would be honored as a range.
Yes.
I agree with that. I think, I think whatever we advertise, it's got to fall somewhere in that range.
Okay. Any other questions? Does anyone wish to propose a different range before we take any votes? Okay, so the motion on the table is for a starting salary range of 165,000 to 180, and I will ask for a vote. All in favor? Okay, that is unanimous. Thank you very much. And thank you, Dr. Mercurio, for joining us this evening. All right. Next up, we have some policy discussion. Item C under General Business, we have Policy 1024, School Improvement Teams First Read to Replace Policy 1023. That is item 4C. So, what you have in your packets this evening, and the policy subcommittee met a few weeks back, we did come up with these first reads, and I will tell you that what you have in your packet is a redlined version. You will be, we will be posting a clean version very soon on... a clean version, um, very soon on this, unless somebody here has immediate changes they'd like to suggest. But basically, the School Improvement Team policy, as it's written, was, first of all, proposed by our attorney, Mr. Scangio, and we did meet and make some changes to it. Um, I will say that it is in line with current state law. The Policy, uh, ten twenty-three, which is the former School Improvement Team policy, when we come up to second read, we will ask that that be removed, because it was a very old version and was put together long before the Rhode Island School Improvement Act of two thousand and nineteen. So we will, um, we will go through this policy moving forward. Does anyone have any questions? I don't wanna read it to you, um, but it is largely in line with what you see in the law.
Uh, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just, just quickly, so did we, did we choose to get rid of ten twenty-three just because it would have been so odd, so far out of, we would have been, everything would have been read and?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
It, it's just completely different.
Okay, thank you.
So the wording will be changed?
The, what do you mean by the wording?
I was just looking through this, and there was a couple of grammar things I was looking at.
No, if you have something to suggest, please do.
Right now, it's a lot.
Well, I'll tell you what, email.
Okay.
Um, Sarah and I, okay, and, and we'll, uh, get it tweaked.
Okay, perfect.
Especially if it's, uh, spelling, grammar, what have you, we can easily change that.
I didn't realize this was supposed to be it.
No, no, no. So this is the first read tonight.
Okay.
Um, we have a couple of weeks till our next meeting, at which time we'll do a second read and vote to adopt, so if there are changes to be made, now is the time to, to make those recommendations.
Awesome, okay.
And we've even gone beyond the second read before.
We have.
So it's, yeah, I mean, we wanna get it right.
Yep.
Okay.
No, much rather prolong it and do it once.
Awesome, thank you. I'll get that out to you.
All right, thank you.
Uh, just a question about, uh, School Committee shall annually review the membership composition of each team.
Yes.
Will there be any, like, procedural language in here to say, like, is that going to happen in the fall, at the beginning of the school year?
There, there won't be any procedural language, with that being said, typically, what we have is the, um, school improvement plans that do come in front of us in the fall every year by all of the principals, and at that time is when I would expect that they would share, uh, the composition of their school improvement teams with us.
Thank you.
As part of that reporting. Any other questions?
Will there be minutes for these sit-team meetings? Do they do minutes for that?
They don't share them with us.
Oh.
But I, and, and Mrs. Craven, you're, you're here with us this evening, do you take, are there minutes for yours?
Yeah, can I just share it in the, without the minutes at the meeting?
Thank you.
The, these aren't, um, they aren't committees who, just so we're clear, these aren't committees that would be covered under open meetings laws.
No.
They're, they're committees to the principals, so you keep minutes, that's great, but that it's not, they don't fall under open meetings so that they don't ha, you know, they don't report to us, I guess, is my clarification, so that, um, certainly we could, they could share the minutes, but they're not required to keep minutes, they're not required to post their agendas, they're not required to post the minutes online, they do not fall under open meetings.
Thank you, and, you know, just a, as another add, our role with the school improvement teams is just to ensure that, number one, they exist, number two, they're active, and number three, that their membership is as prescribed by state law. Uh, that's, that's the extent of our involvement with the school improvement teams. Okay, so we will put that on, um, again, if anyone has any recommendations to make for, uh, grammar or spelling, what have you, please do get them to us, and we will put them, make those adjustments before our next meeting, when we will, uh, I, I would hope to vote to accept the School Improvement Team Policy, ten twenty-four. Um, I am going to ask that we table Items D, E, and F, um, for discussion at our next meeting, uh, that would be Policy twelve hundred, twelve oh one, and five sixty-six, um, and we will have discussion on that on our May thirteenth meeting. Okay, so that moves us over to Item G. Policy Subcommittee Request to Review and Update Policy ten seventy-six. Ms. Sherman.
Thank you, um, I requested this to be on the agenda for our consideration of revising or updating that policy, um, and basically that policy has some language on advertisement and the school property, on the athletic fields, what have you. There are many, many other school districts that allow for that, and I think it's something that we should consider, um, and I can provide policies from other districts to show their language in how they vet the process, who the business is gonna be, how much they contribute, and what those funds go to. So typically, in one policy I read, you know, if businesses did advertise, let's say, um, the fencing of a softball field, um, it would have to be approved, and there would be a certain dollar amount, and it would go, you know, through the school committee, but, and those funds would be directed towards athletics. So I think it's something that I hope we can revisit and consider as just another piece of the solution that we're trying to put together here.
So do I have a motion to refer Policy ten seventy-six, which I believe is entitled Advertisement Policy, to the Policy Subcommittee?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any, uh, questions for Jocelyn?
I think that would be very helpful to see samples of other policies, I'm sure the Policy Subcommittee would appreciate that, but, yeah, it's, I mean, we've updated a few times over the years, but certainly it's, it's, um, a good time to look at it.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. I'll send that information, and I, I was always unclear if it was a policy that prohibited, we wrote that prohibited it, or was it a town thing?
Our policy doesn't prohibit advertising.
Right.
But it does allow it under very strict circumstances.
Yes.
And, you know, certainly, times have evolved.
Yeah.
Since that policy was put in place, so absolutely, let's take a look at it.
And I think even the Town Rec, um, Committee has some pretty good language on how they navigate it as well, so.
Super.
Yeah, I'll, I'll share all that.
Good.
Thank you.
All right, so all those in favor? All right, thank you. All right, Item H, Health and Wellness Committee Update, Ms. Sherman again.
Hey, thank you. So Happy Earth Day, everyone, I think it's a good day to share this update. The Health and Wellness Committee was, uh, made aware of a program called the Rhode Island Farm and Sea to School Institute from the Rhode Island Healthy School Coalition, and so Sarah submitted the application on behalf of the district, and we were accepted into the program, so that's very exciting. And basically what it is, is an opportunity for professional development around bringing farm and sea to the school and what that means for kids, so it's, it's K to twelve, um, there's a retreat involved in which we can all get the training that we need, we have a mentor with the program, and we can get really creative and think about perhaps how we incorporate it K to twelve, but maybe it can work with the new CTE program at the high school as well. So we're pretty excited to pursue this, we have more steps involved, um, in the process, there is a small fee, and so we are inquiring about a scholarship so that we can waive that fee and not, um, incur that. Um, and I just, by chance today, went to a tabletop event at Farm Fresh Rhode Island, and I asked a lot of questions about it, and they were very excited, very supportive. Um, I've connected with them since, and they're also a part of what they can offer for this program, so I think it's really, um, interesting what we can look at to introduce foods to kids, maybe grow some things here within the district, whatever it might be, this is a K to twelve initiative, so all schools benefit, so, excited for that, and we'll give you more updates as they unfold.
Well, thank you very much, and it's all good work. Um, and you do have a Health and Wellness Committee meeting coming up?
I believe it's May sixth is our next meeting.
Okay.
And so at that meeting, we will discuss this, and I think we're gonna have more information on, uh, the commitment that we'll have going to the institute, and who will be involved within the district, any volunteers that wanna get involved, and a potential grant opportunity to add more funds to this initiative, so more to come on that.
Very good.
Thank you.
Would there be a garden at each school?
Um, not necessarily, uh, I think we have to, we have to go to the institute first and learn from them on different programs that are offered. Some examples that they shared from other districts were that they would do an event within the school to introduce local produce to elementary kids and have them taste it and help them understand how it grows. It would be great to get to that point, um, somebody I was talking to at the event today did share a district that's about to roll out six gardens as part of their program, so, awesome goal, I, I don't know that we can do it right from the start, but that would be the goal, to do things like that, and truly make it farm to table.
Very good, thank you very much. All right. Letter I, Vote to Accept ACT Foundation Grant in the Amount of Four Thousand Five Hundred Dollars for a TMS Track and Field. Dr. Senkione?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On behalf of, uh, Coach Schreiner, who wrote a grant to the ACT Foundation, you're familiar with ACT, they've funded many of our athletic endeavors in the past, his grant was accepted for forty-five hundred to support the middle school track team for equipment and so forth, so I ask you to accept this with gratitude.
Do I have a motion to accept the ACT Foundation Grant in the amount of forty-five hundred for a TMS Track and Field?
I like that motion.
A little second.
Okay, any discussion? I just wanna say thank you to, um, Coach Schreiner for, um, taking the initiative to go after this grant, and if there are no other comments, then all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. All right, next up, we have Math Matters Update, Dr. Senkione.
Thank you, Madam Chair, so in your packet, I provided you the latest iteration of the Learn Three Sixty-Five Grant, uh, this is Iteration Three. Um, this grant, money allocated through the Governor's Office to towns, but then indirectly to schools, um, was restricted to math instruction, K-eight, uh, non-school hours, so our grant was written to provide, as you can see here, two programs, one for grades three and four, summer, summer boot camp, and then at the middle school for all grades at the middle school, also during the summer, and you can see how the grant is broken down to pay our instructors, pay the lead instructor, provide transportation so we can get students to the program all through the summer hours and so forth, so, um, it's an update, you've actually already approved this, and the grant was for forty thousand dollars, and it'll be well-spent, uh, we had successful programs similar to this last summer, and we expect nothing less than that again this summer.
Thank you very much, uh, it's good to know that these types of programs are out there to help our kids outside of the school day, um, just to add to their, their academic success, especially in the area of math. Anyone have any questions? I do.
I have a question. How are the students selected to partake in this program?
Yep, through the, through the math department at the elementary school, the teachers, and at the math department at the middle school, and they use a lot of metrics, they'll look at Star, they'll look at Rycastator, they'll look at students who just need support.
Okay, thank you.
So you have a hundred, have these students, have these parents committed to this? A hundred?
No, we'll begin that process probably sometime in May.
Okay.
Yep, but we have letters, we, we send invitation letters home to all the students who we feel would be best served by this, and then the parents respond, and if they do, then we coordinate with the bus company to have the students picked up, and works from there.
And where do they go? Where exactly is the location?
Uh, this summer will be, well, the middle school and Epicasset.
Oh, okay, so it's in district?
Yeah, no, absolutely, and it's our teachers, it's our staff members who, who run the programs.
And how do you choose them?
Uh, we post the job, people apply, and then once they apply, we, we appoint them.
I'm looking at your snacks, the middle school, you have to provide seven hundred and twenty snacks. Are you sure you have enough money to cover that?
Not all during, the, um, if you look at how it's written, it's two sessions, so kids are coming at different times, so, um, you know, it'll, it'll work out, that's, it's similar to what we did last year.
Okay, I just wanna check, 'cause it seemed like a low amount for seven hundred and twenty snacks.
Yeah, and we're somewhat restricted on what we can use for snack money, too, they, they want the money to be spent on the instruction and the transportation and so forth.
Okay.
You're not gonna get a good snack.
I guess not.
It'll be healthy.
Some water and...
Right, basically what it is, water and...
It's a healthy jock sword.
That's right.
Yeah.
And one carrot.
Ball of the guidelines, absolutely.
All right, thank you very much for the update. All right, last on our agenda, we have an FY twenty-six budget update, Mr. Andre.
What about fourth grade?
Oh, I, sorry, I checked that off ahead of time. Ms. Crager, you have an update for us on the fourth grade relocation?
I do, and I included a memo in your packet, so I'll just review that with you. Um, we have had two focus group meeting sessions, the sessions included eighteen people both times, four staff members, the rest are, um, parents of students who will be entering fourth grade, and, um, it's facilitated by myself, Mr. Zitoli, and Mr. Kellet. Um, the goal of the team is to engage parents, faculty, staff, and our administrators in meaningful conversation and collaborative action around the fourth grade transition. You can see there, our priorities are to ensure that we continue to offer high-quality education for all students, foster a resilient and connected school community, communicate clearly with families, and provide the support our staff needs to ensure a smooth transition. We started our first session, um, by coming up with a group, a, uh, set of shared commitments. These include embracing diverse perspectives, volunteering time and talents, staying involved beyond the school year, and serving as positive ambassadors, and promoting a culture of safety and excellence. So so far, um, in our two sessions, the group has explored a variety of transition-related topics, including naming the fourth grade community, transportation logistics, the appearance and welcoming feel of the hallway, which we've already started work on, events and celebrations for fourth graders, bathroom procedures, PTO, and how we can strengthen communication system for families and administration. We also began discussing how a positive behavior intervention system could support a smooth transition. Currently, all of our elementary schools have a positive behavior intervention system, so we just wanna kind of transition that with our students. Uh, there are several additional topics we plan to tackle in upcoming meetings, we have a meeting scheduled for next Monday, such as recess, lunch, school safety, student resources, and the schedule for fourth grade. Overall, we have had, uh, really valuable insight and feedback, and, um, I look forward to continuing the focus group sessions.
Thank you very much. Um, I guess one question that I would have for you is, uh, are we going to need to commit any funds to this transition?
So there are some, um, as far as the appearance, like for the hallway, some painting, um, that we're doing and removing some of the lockers, but I don't think those are any additional funds, correct me if I'm wrong? Um, so we don't, at this point, foresee any additional funds that are needed.
You're planning on taking out lockers? Did I hear that?
We did.
Yep.
You're worried about what's behind them?
Yeah.
Baseboard.
Yep.
Already checked?
It's already taken out.
Yeah. Awesome. I know there were concerns, uh, nobody wants to see the lockers there, I get it, that the concern was what's behind them.
Yeah, no, the custodians did some work, uh, great work, actually, over April break, and, um, they did remove a section of them, and it looks great.
Oh, good, good, well, that'll help. Anyone else have any comments?
Can I add a topic?
Can you add a topic?
To discuss at the future meeting?
Of course.
Um...
Well, it depends what it is.
All right.
No, I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
Um, just student support, for any students that may have any...
Yep.
...difficulty with that transition, social, emotional learning, or just some type of support.
Would that be included under resources?
Yeah, that would probably come up, even under safety, um, that may come up, but I'll, um, make sure we include that as a topic.
I just have a question, too.
Very good.
With these focus groups, um, it, has there been an opportunity just to pull together a small group of current middle schoolers that are like seventh and eighth grade that can share insight, what their experience was when they first started, and a few parents had suggested that early on when this became the reality, um, as a way to just get guidance from those kids and...
Yeah, actually, Mr. Zitoli and Mr. Kellet have, um, already organized a group of seventh and eighth graders, their leadership team, to meet with the upcoming fourth graders and fifth graders, actually, to talk to them about the transition.
Great.
So that's part of the plan. And we also talked about having, um, potentially, sort of like junior bus monitors, some of the seventh and eighth graders supporting the students on the bus, too, as part of some of our discussions, so some, you know, some fun and, um, kind of, uh, good initiatives are coming out of those discussions.
I bet they would be tougher than the actual monitor.
Probably.
When we used to have, um, middle school orientation for the upcoming fifth grade class, the eighth graders took those kids around on tours, and it just meant so much more...
Yeah.
Than any of us trying to give that tour. You know, it was, it was better.
Yeah, it sounds like that's still part of the plan.
Could the older students get community service hours for any of this work?
They do, they can do that.
That's good.
Very good. Thank you for this.
You're welcome. I'll keep you informed as we continue those groups.
I appreciate that. And I think it's important to the, for the community to hear, you know, that you are working very closely with the parents. And so far, from everything I've heard, it's been a very positive engagement with them and can continue to be as we go forward, so, thank you.
You're welcome.
And thank you to all the parents that are participating as well. Sorry, I almost skipped you. Now, Mr. Andrade, FY26 budget update.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nothing in front of you this evening, I'm just going to fill you in of what's transpired and what's upcoming. So we met, Dr. Senkione, Madam Chair, and myself met with the Budget Committee on April 14th. The meeting went well, many good questions were asked at the meeting. There has, they mentioned some follow-up questions. We have not received any follow-up questions, so I think that overall, that means we probably answered all the questions at the meeting. They're meeting this evening. They have till April 25th, this Friday, to present their budget package to the Town Council, Town Administrator, and I believe tonight's their only open meeting on the state website. So I assume they might be finalizing tonight.
So your assumption is correct. I, because I had a little bit of time to kill, I didn't want to put out the trash with my husband, so I, I went to the Budget Committee meeting first.
Oh.
And yes, indeed, they do plan to wrap up tonight.
Okay.
And at this time, they do not have any additional specific questions.
So I know they did ask some additional questions on the town side, but again, the school department has not received any. So as we move forward, there's been some changes, adjustments, but nothing to the overall revenue expense totals. So everything you guys have received to date is, it's pretty much the same, so no changes to report. So the next step is, Town Council asked us to meet on May 5th for a, the first workshop with the Town Council and the School Committee. They have till May 13th to present their preliminary adoption budget for FY26. And then, I believe, on that date, they have to put a date forward for the final adoption. Is that correct? It's to be determined on the charter for final adoption after that.
I don't think they are required to set that date right then and there.
Okay, I know it comes after the May 13th.
It does come after.
But it's TBD in the charter, so...
But that preliminary vote is, whatever, May 13, 15, whatever.
Yep, so our next meeting is May 13th. The idea would be, we would provide a final layoff list for approval by the School Committee because we have to meet the June 1st state law deadline for that layoff list. And that's all I have. Thank you for dedication, adaptability, as we navigate FY26.
Thank you. Yeah, the Town Council, at their meeting last night, decided to hold May 5th and May 12th for their budget discussions. And the Town Council President did reach out to me subsequent to that and mentioned that schools will be in the highlight, the spotlight, on May 5th. So we'll, you know, I will put out an ask of all of you, if you are planning to attend. If so, I will go ahead and post a meeting for us. And if not, I can assure you that I will attend along with Mr. Andrade and Dr. Senkione, at a minimum. So, outside of that, our next meeting is May 13th, and then following that, May 28th. So, and then tomorrow night, I just wanted to mention as well that here in the library at 6:00 PM is the SILAC, the Special Ed Local Advisory. That'll be meeting here to have a workshop talking about IEP-related services. And the public is invited, and certainly, parents who have children with either IEPs or 504 plans are definitely encouraged to come. So that's, that's tomorrow evening. And that is...
I actually had a budget kind of related question.
Oh, sure.
If I can go back, quick. Do we know, because I know sometimes we look at it when we're finalizing, has the town audit been completed? Do we know?
So we received our final draft today. Well, 11 o'clock last night, I received it, but today, pretty much. So Denise Soret and I are going through it to do a final review before we accept it. Our state MTP file was submitted today, which is part of the process. We don't finalize the audit until the State Division of Finance approves that MTP.
So that, final FY23, our budgeted FY, or, final FY24.
Twenty-four, correct.
Our, our budget now, and then anticipated 26 will have, like, that'll all be pretty final now.
Correct, yeah, everything's, yeah, everything's been approved from an audit standpoint, just a review. Your CO has been approved today. MTP was sent today for approval, so everything's close to done.
Okay.
Just in time to start it up again.
Yes.
All right. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Can I ask a question? Before you do that? I was just wondering, is the search committee all set?
Yes.
It is, okay.
Yes.
I didn't know anything about that.
No, we got commitments from everyone, and I will be sending out an email reminder to the participants in advance of the first workshop in May, just to kind of remind everyone. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I have a second.
Second.
All those in favor? We're adjourned, thank you.